Media attention. Again, we got an uptick on those. We're trying as quickly as possible to analyze the data and find out if there is a cause for that. But I think it's, this helps kind of put things in a longer-term perspective of what's going on.
And this is, this is why we've made the point that we get, you know, four or five breaks or leaks every single day. We get 1,400 of them a year. And that's a much better record than other American cities. And the crews get out there and they do their work efficiently and people don't even notice. What has happened here is that we've had two very spectacular events that occurred back-to-back. And of course, that has focused the attention of Angelenos on the issue, I think naturally. But I, but I hope that this graph will help allay concerns somewhat. That this is not in terms of the numbers unprecedented, but we do understand that people are concerned. We're not going to minimize those concerns. We're going to get down to the bottom of it and provide an explanation for the uptick that's occurred.
No, we appreciate that very much. And I still have to think of Brett Levin, who was a firefighter in Westchester, who died in an explosion as he was going into a cabinet there. And those pipes blew out the, the manholes went way up. And that was a whole nother issue, but it's our pipe system and, and all of that. When you look at San Diego, they put a tax on themselves to repair and to replace their infrastructure about 10, 15 years ago. Do we need to focus on some kind of a long-term plan of replacing the old pipes and putting in new pipes? Is that part of where you want to take this, which I hope the answer is yes?
Well, we do have a plan. We do have a pipeline replacement program which Jim talked about, and we're going to continue that. And I think Jim's plan is for, for next year to replace 110,000 feet of pipe. That's 22 miles if my, so there is, there is ongoing work. It's been done, you know, as I say, quietly and efficiently, and it will continue to be a page.
Any other members who wish to be heard on this? If not, I think the action, should we see him file this?
Actually, Mr. President, there is a recommendation on this.
Let me vote then, okay? Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the time.
Item 25 was a first consideration of an ordinance that would require all buildings, including single-family housing, to apply anti-graffiti coating, saying he wants to create more flexibility with property owners and at the same time have a cleaner city. District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asked staff to explain the new ordinance.
This has to do with how we clean up the graffiti and all the different markings that come on buildings. And so if you could just speak to the ordinance and what it offers and how it'll be implemented here in the city.
Okay. Hi, my name is John Beazins. I'm with Building and Safety. And the ordinance offers an option for building owners when they construct a new building to sign an affidavit, a covenant and agreement, that they will remove any graffiti that's applied to the building within seven days of application and creates awareness about the graffiti issues. Otherwise, there's another part that requires that they have to design the building with an anti-graffiti finish on the walls. And this is a little bit limiting to the designers, like ceramic tile or something. So they would prefer it's a while to have an option so that we could remove graffiti more easily.
Speaking to the amount of the fine and the timeline of payment, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl sees the ordinance as a cost-saving when it comes to removal of graffiti.
It's $550 fine, right?
Yeah, that's existing already. That's not part of this change, but yes.
But 45 days later, if they haven't removed it, they might be subject to that?
Oh, that's right. That's correct.
Okay. So when we're looking at all new design or all new developments, they have to be sensitive to the strategy we've put forward?
That's correct.
Now, what are the environmental issues regarding this, if there are any?
We didn't find any. If anything, this, this, this option not to put the coating on would be better for the environment. There'd be less coatings put on.
So then they must realize anybody building a new project, that they'll have the responsibility to clean up the graffiti, basically within seven days of discovering it?
That's correct.
And this coating or this particular surface, is that easily done or would that require, you know, gas pains with the developer?
Well, it depends on the materials they want to use and the types of coatings applied differently to different materials. So it's, it's a bit of a burden to the developers at this point.
And what are we going to do to inform them as they go through the building and safety process, through the planning process, that they must go forward with this new strategy?
As plans are submitted to Building and Safety, they, they are, they will be apprised of the new requirement that they, the new option to sign the affidavit.
And by signing it, that means they take responsibility? By not signing it, that means they must go forward with it?
Correct. If they don't sign it, they have to do some type of exterior finish like ceramic tile.
This was a motion, colleagues, by Ms. Gruehl and myself seconding it. And the bottom line is, we spent a lot of money on graffiti removal. Wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to spend as much money in this tight budget hour, but able to rely on the designers and the architects and creating the projects going forward? It's a great idea and obviously look for an eye vote.
Discovering that city property would be exempt from the proposed ordinance, District Four Councilmember Tom Labond offers an amendment.
I wanted to ask a question on this here as it relates to city property. How's it relate to city property?
This, this does not affect city property. This is for private property.
But would we have the same responsibility as the private property on?
Uh, no.
But we should. So I have an amendment that the city property be the same as that. Do you have a second on that? Second by Ms. Hahn, number one. Number two, challenge to vandalism is sometimes they overtake city vehicles. Road graders, tractors, dump trucks, bins, et cetera, with city seals. I think any city vehicle should have the same requirement as this. Don't you agree, John?
Yeah, I'm sure that would be helpful.
Okay, is that in the ordinance?
No, that is not.
Okay, could I have a second to add to the ordinance that city vehicles? Well, Mr. City--
If I could, if I could just clarify, any amendments to the ordinance would, that'd have to be sent back, possibly to committee and to our office to work on. So if you want to form it as a, as a report-backed motion to go through your--
I want a vote to support this, but then I want one right behind it, right behind it, because I think it's not right that we not require ourselves to say that we require the people who we represent.
So perhaps--
Mr. Smith has a question.
Point of interest, we brought this up a few years ago. Public Works agreed to do that. So all of our trucks should be painted out and they have the yellow paint available. And if they're not doing, just contact the supervisor of the yard where they're at and tell them to go do that. That is an instruction we gave Public Works two years ago.
Expressing their concerns about the burden of graffiti removal being now placed on property owners, District Nine Councilmember Jan Perry brings up the subject of glass etching.
I understand the basis for this motion probably as much or more than those of you as we in South LA suffer from an inordinate amount of graffiti and etching, which I think is the next generation of graffiti in some ways. I am a bit concerned that the burden is being put on the property owner. And I think that there will need to be some clarity or clarification at the counter as to what type of coating is appropriate, given the surface, which will probably also include windows. I have started a discussion in Public Safety Committee, now that I'm on Public Safety Committee, about the etching to see what we can do about that. And I'll bring that forward and maybe at some point we'll have to merge these two or join them or amend this later. But I just want it to be on the record that I'm concerned about placing the burden on the property owner. And I'm concerned about the types of surfaces that need to be protected and how we communicate that to the property owner. And then number three, the issue of etching, which is just as real and just as serious as the graffiti issue. And this is a good first cut, but it's not dispositive of the issue. So I think we're going to have to come back and do further clarification in a very short period of time. So I'll be very interested in what Building and Safety has to say as people come to the counter and make comment. And I hope you'll come back. And I'll ask me to come back to Public Safety in about 60 days.
Wanting more information on the agreement that allows owners to opt out of applying the anti-graffiti coating, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn asks about enforcement.
So what we're doing here is amending the ordinance to allow for this opt-out clause or to require that this coating is put on all buildings and single-family dwellings?
Currently, new buildings have this requirement. They must be built and maintained with this anti-graffiti finish, some type of anti-graffiti finish.
Okay.
What we're, what the ordinance amends is to provide an option--
Right.
--so that they may sign this covenant and agreement in lieu of doing a graffiti-resistant finish on new buildings only.
Okay.
And existing, but currently it only applies to commercial buildings.
And single-family dwellings?
Mm-hmm. Single-family dwellings will have to sign the covenant and agreement as well, new ones, newer.
Or, or put this, this coating on. So right now, all new buildings in the, in the city of LA are required to put this coating on. How's that going so far?
Well, it's, it's, it's going all right in some cases. The coating has to match the surface very closely. Certain coatings work well with some surfaces and not so with other surfaces. So the industry came to us and had concerns that it wasn't working as well as they'd like and would like to be the ones responsible for designing the buildings. And they, and this is one of the solutions we came up--
Is this coating regularly available? Is it cost-effective? Where are we getting this coating?
From what we hear from the industry, in some cases, yes, it is, depending on what type of building materials are used and what type of materials the coating is applied to.
So there's not just one coating that--
No, that, no, that's part of the challenge, to match the coating to the building materials in order for it to be effective.
What, and what, how are we defining this covenant?
This is a covenant. It's called an Anti-Graffiti Maintenance of Building Covenant and Agreement.
Right.
And it, it, every person that doesn't put the coating on, or, you know, the coat, the anti-graffiti finish could also be like a tile wall.
Right.
So just some, some impermeable finish. So this, this allows an exception from that if they agree to remove any graffiti within seven days.
Okay, so they either put this coating on or they agree to remove it within seven days. What kind of enforcement do we have available to us during these budget times to actually implement this covenant?
Well, the budget's stretched thin, I'm sure, as you know. And we have a code enforcement bureau that responds to these complaints and also refers them to Public Works Office of Community Beautification for removal of graffiti.
So that matters now, before's. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you.
L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 2nd, 2009. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely leashed and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket, a rug, and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
Good morning and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, October 7th, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. And today, we are here, as is the custom. We are also on the first Friday of each month in Van Nuys City Hall, to try to bring our City Council Meetings closer to all Angelinos, but we want to welcome those members of the public who are here in the community today, as well as those who are viewing us on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts each of these meetings live throughout the city's cable system, and rebroadcasts those meetings at night as well. We're also available for your convenience two other ways: online through your computer. If you go to lacity.org, our city's homepage, you can navigate on the left side of the page and watch live streaming webcasts of these council meetings. Also for your convenience, we have archived footage of all of our past council meetings, and those are linked directly to our city agendas, our city council agendas, and to supporting material for all the items we consider, in order to give you the same information that we as council members receive. Those agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those are available online, or here in person, or also available in the city clerk's office. You can also listen into council meetings and any of our committee meetings through your telephone by calling the following number: (213) 621-CITY. Again, that's (213) 621-CITY, and you can listen into any of the council meetings or the committee meetings as well. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us today, we have speaker cards in the back, or if you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, you can testify remotely from those locations, again, for your convenience. And we have the items that are on the agenda split into items that have had public hearings, and those that have not yet had public hearings. For items that have already had public hearings, it requires a reopening to hear your comments, and a council member has to move to do that, otherwise, there will be no second public hearing. Those are held in committee quite often. But for items that have not yet had a public hearing, if you'd like to be heard, please fill out a speaker card in the back, hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to get your comments today. And finally, part of the meeting is also for general public comment. That's for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, part of the city's business, and if you'd like to be heard, again, just fill out a public speaker card, put "public comment" in the upper right corner, and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms. We have the podium there, and a clock to help guide your comments for usually one or two minutes, and there's also a code of decorum there, to maintain decorum while we are having our council meetings. So with that, I want to thank those council members who are here on time, and we have a quorum, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order?
Notary resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number four, request to continue that matter to Friday, October 9th.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continue item four until the 9th? That's this Friday, seeing none, we'll go ahead and do that. Other items?
Yes, item number 20, a request to continue that matter to October 13th.
Okay, there's no objection, we'll continue item number 20 till the 13th.
And also, request on number 26 to continue that matter to the 14th.
Without objection, we'll continue item 26 to the 14th of this month as well.
And on item number 33, the closed session, one of the closed session items, the city attorneys requested that matter be continued for one week to October 14th.
Okay, any objection to that, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and continue that as well. We can run through the other items?
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1, 2, and 3 are street alley vacation protests, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay, without objection, we'll go ahead and take that action. If we can go to the next one?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, would you like to take a vote on that item?
Yes, let's go ahead, 1 through 3, excuse me, well, to hear the protests, let's go ahead, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, next items, please.
Next item?
Fourth with on 2, without objection.
Next items are items to which public hearings have been held, items 5 through 19.
Okay, colleagues, any specials, 5 through 19? We'll call 11 special for myself, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Coetz?
I'd like to call item 7 special for council member Han.
Okay, 7 for Ms. Han.
And Mr. President, item number 5 was in committee this morning, and I believe committee reports to be submitted on that item, and would you like to call that special?
Yeah, let's hold that on the table for Mr. Wesson. Any other specials, colleagues? 4 through 19, or 6 through 19 now? If not, let's go ahead and please prepare the roll on the balance, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 32, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have any cards on these?
There are cards on 25 and 27, and 20 and 26 have already been acted on, those have already been continued.
All right, let's call those two special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Is there another one?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one as well, okay. We'll close the other public hearings, any specials, colleagues, 20 through 32? Or 21 through 32? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance then, please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, and if we can hold the closed session items on the table for closed session.
And then that would take council back to public comment.
Okay, Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, items 36 through 39 are routine workers' comp.
Okay.
Cases that we could handle, and if there's no question, we'd be handling open session.
All right, let's take those up just before public comment then. If there's nobody who wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and go through the settlements on 36 through 39, and then we'll come back for public comment.
The first item, item number 36, that settlement in the case of Amstutz versus the city, and the settlement amount is $104,160 plus a life pension thereafter of $74.71 per week.
Okay, go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, next item?
Next item's item 37, and that settlement in the case of Daryl Little versus the city, and the settlement amount is $140,000.
Go ahead and please prepare the roll on that settlement, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, next item?
Next item's 38, and that's in the case of Reyna versus the city, settlement amount is $125,134.88 plus a life pension thereafter of $131.42 per week.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 38, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That settlement is approved as well, and item 39, please.
39 is in the case of Hall versus the city, settlement amount is $194,737.50 plus a life pension thereafter of $216.46 per week.
Great, let's go ahead, if there's no members who wish to be heard on that, prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well, we'll come back to public comment now.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, there's one more, item number 40, and that's in the case of Ruff versus the city.
I think Mr. Parks just removed 36 through 39. Mr. Parks, was number 40 one of them as well? Mr. Parks, was item 40 included in that list, or just 39?
I understood 40 was continued.
No, 40 was not, we continued 33.
Oh, okay, if 40 is not continued, then yes, I should go on that list also.
Okay, let's go ahead and please consider for number 40 then.
And that settlement amount is $106,375 plus a life pension thereafter of $54.11.
Okay, please prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved as well. We'll next go to our general public comment. Again, this is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. And first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams, we have two minutes per speaker, after that is Oscar Johnson. Very good morning, sir.
Good morning, Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Serena, Northeast LA. Several things, because you continued one item. I'd like to present these brochure, or pliers for FAST, that is Friendly Arroyo Seco Trappers, to collect feral cats, and to have them either spayed or neutered, and checked for medical. Why? Because Animal Services doesn't like cats, because they know that cats are very expensive. So we go out and trap them. Tomorrow morning, at 6 o'clock, I will be picking up 13 qualified cats, and taking them for being spayed and neutered in one day. So we would highly recommend that future commissioners of the animal services be a bit more sympathetic to the private sector controlling cats. So that's item one. Item two, yesterday there was a discussion as to how the high-speed rail will go through downtown LA. One of the motions was to have it reconsidered as far as the station site, and thereby the approaches. I highly recommend that you consider going not only above or on, but also underground, going underground between 4th and 6th Street, going under the US 101, going between Piper Tech and Union Station, and then going straight north, under cornfields, under Dodger Stadium, under the LA River, to the MetroLink at State Route 2. I think it would be very attractive, underground, no bridges across the LA River, no bridges across the public areas that are being developed as part of the Rio, Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker, and after that will be Danny Garcia. Good morning, sir. I could ask folks to try to keep their conversations, please, to a minimum, or to move them behind council chambers, so we can hear our public comment.
My name is Oscar Johnson, I'm proactive, I speak for the oppressed, and I speak for culture change. I'd like to know what happened to our government in these last 10 years, I see our senior citizens have been thrown away. We have a senior citizen disability apartment down on 11th Avenue in Verna, and two senior citizens in the last year have jumped to their death. Seemless though, we have more abuse in our nursing home today. We should be more accountable for our citizens than what we are, we should give them a better lead way, we should reconnect them to their loved ones if possible. We should end corruption in government, end illegal immigration, stop drugs, stop government waste, we should create more jobs for the African-American youth males that stand on the corner, so they can meet females and get married, and quit leaving half so many babies out of wedlock, with no moral responsibility in their life. We need better schools, we need to support our new president, Barack Obama, his wife, Michelle Obama, and if any elected official don't support President Barack Obama, he should be moved from service, because this one time, we are going in the right direction. We should clean up Skid Row, Skid Row is no place for women and children, be around filth and corruption all day. We need to make our leaves more accountable, Clifton Cafeteria on 7th and Broadway should be closed down, they have bad food, they're not having any business, and they're only opening up for corruption and racketeering, and I'd like to know who have left that Crenshaw Walmart on Martin Luther King and Baldwin Hill, left in those black females' hands? Who is in charge of that Crenshaw Walmart, that left Walmart in charge of those African-American females that run Walmart? We need a better government, we need an economic racism, Maravara Gose is violating the Labor, the Federal Labor Act, to hire black men in the labor force. We need to have a better government, we need to have a just government. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Daniel Garcia is our next speaker, after that is Arnold Sachs.
Hi, I'm Daniel Garcia, and I want to, Arnold, to speak for me?
Sure, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Sachs as well.
Good morning, thank you, I'm sorry. Taser guns are becoming more and more a weapon of choice for local police officers and school officers. Taser guns have been used on children with disabilities at a Long Beach school, were used at a Long Beach school two years ago. I was alarmed with this action, and wanted to know what the public opinion of this issue was. So I went to sodahead.com, and created a small survey with two questions. The first question was, should a taser gun be used on a child with a disability? 63% of the respondents said no, 21% said yes, and 4% were undecided. The second question was, was it wrong to use a taser gun on a 12-year-old autistic child? 77% of the respondents said yes, 15% of the respondents said no, and eight were undecided. I was happy to learn that a great majority disapproved of the actions of the Hawthorne School Police Officer that he used on this autistic child. However, I was shocked to see the comments in support of the police action. These are some of the comments. The officer's other likely resources were his handgun, pepper spray, a slapjack, and possibly a nightstick. The kid is the size of a short adult, the taser would probably do the least damage of the available choices. Comment number two, if I'm being attacked by a 12-year-old autistic child, and they can't pull him off of me, and I'm in danger of being hurt, then I don't care if he's autistic or not, they better tase the crap out of him. Comment number three is, that could have seriously injured a child, but he was autistic. I mean, because of that, it would have taken a lot longer for the kid to realize what he is doing wrong. I once knew a person with autism, he was really hyperactive, and it would have taken a lot of people to calm him down, I'm just guessing that the officer was doing, what the officer was doing was out of self-defense. These public comments concern me because no police or school officials are not trained in nonviolent intervention, or they show that police and school officials are not trained in nonviolent intervention and other non-lethal weapons with their approach to autistic children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia, appreciate your comments.
You want to hand it to them?
And thank you, Mr. Sachs, for assisting. We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets that as well. You can ask the sergeant-at-arms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Arnold Sachs will be our next speaker.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
It was very interesting hearing you on Friday discuss the merits of your closed case, closed here, closed discussion in chambers at Van Nuys City Hall regarding the case with Laura Chick. But what was really fascinating was the start of the case. I believe one of the council mentioned, the council people mentioned, she was quoted in the newspaper. Quoted in the newspaper, and you're going to build a case on a quote in the newspaper? Tell me, was it the LA Times? Was it the Daily News? Was it the Press Telegram? Maybe it was Clark Kent's Daily Planet? How do you build a court case on a quote in the newspaper? Let me give you some quotes regarding another favorite, one of my favorite subjects, that would have been the marathon, that was so wonderfully handled by the city council. According to LA President Russ Pilar, the switch to May was because many employees don't observe Presidents' Day, so fewer runners and volunteers would have been able to participate. That's his quote. According to the Los Angeles Marathon Pre-Ways Progress Report from the Los Angeles Marathon Ad-Hoc Committee, the rescheduling of the Los Angeles Marathon from early February to May appears to be the main issue, except neither one of those never happened. It was never rescheduled to February, so it was never moved from February to May. So you have documentation here, and it's lies, and you're going to take documentation from a newspaper and use it to settle a court case? The question I have was, Laura Chick ever advised of the fact that the city's attorney's office has a dispute resolution agent available for her use? And if she was, and she did not take it, then that's a different court case altogether.
Thank you, sir. That will close our general public comment for today, we're still waiting the report for number five, so let's go to number seven, and Ms. Han, that was called special for you, item number seven.
Thank you, colleagues. I called the special just to bring attention to an issue that I know is very important to all of us, and that's affordable housing. And even now, probably more than ever, with what's going on in our economy, it's more important for us as a city to try to find more opportunities to help with projects that will include incentives for people to buy housing. And this is a great action today, and it involves downtown San Pedro, where we are really creating this incredible urban village next to the Port of Los Angeles. You know that we have approved the master plan for the waterfront, or that the Harbor Commission has approved that, so we're going to be building this world-class waterfront right down there in San Pedro. But we're also building housing in downtown San Pedro to sort of complement this great opportunity. And what we're doing today is working to, with the CRA, to offer soft second mortgage assistance to six of this project's lowest-priced units. The LaSalle Lofts is a beautiful adaptive reuse of some old architecture in downtown San Pedro. It consists of, I'm looking on what it consists of, about, oh, six commercial condominium units and 26 residential condominium units, and the CRA is working to give second mortgage assistance to six of the project's lowest-priced units. Sales prices for these affordable loft units are capped at $280,000. This puts it in range for a lot of people to be able to buy their first home. So I just wanted to bring this up, I appreciate your support on this, I think this is an important use of this property, and I really want to thank CRA, along with my staff, for taking this and bringing it to our attention today, so I ask for your aye vote on this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? Okay, now let's go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
As approved, we'll go to number 11 next, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Alarcon on item number 11. Oh yeah, before that, Mr. Zine, I'd like to make an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President, I know you're a member of the United States Navy, and Mr. Smith's son's a member of the United States Navy. We have with us this morning, General Mike Garrett from the United States Army, along with Lieutenant Colonel... with Lieutenant Colonel John Wontana. I got it right this time. And I have my U.S. Army hat. We had a program this morning in the media room, a new program in the United States Army that they are promoting called MAVNI, Military Accessions Vital to National Interest. And it's a program that we unveiled this morning for folks in the United States of America who are not citizens but are here legally. And this program affords them an opportunity to join the United States Army if they have a language ability or in their medical profession, any type of medical profession, and it expedites them in the process to become a citizen of America. So this program is in place. People who are interested, please contact your Army recruiter. Again, it's called MAVNI, M-A-V-N-I. And the general came in from where they store all the gold, Fort Knox, Kentucky. He didn't bring any gold bars for us, but we welcome him here to City Council in just a couple of moments. General, a couple of words from you, please, before you go back to Kentucky.
First of all, thank you very much, and I know you all are very busy, and it's always helpful for those of us who fight to defend our way of life to see government in action. I mean, I'm always amazed and encouraged at watching our system of government work. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for supporting your Los Angeles Battalion Army Recruiting Commander. But again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Weezer, I think, wanted to add some good wishes.
Just one moment.
Mr. Weezer, on this, Mr. Weezer wanted to add some good wishes, too.
Yes. First off, thank you, gentlemen, for your service. And second of all, thank you very much for promoting this program. Thank you, Mr. Zine. I, when I was in college and the Kuwait War broke out, I was a resident but not a citizen. And I remember thinking to myself, well, and those talk of the draft, and I was thinking to myself, you know, I could possibly be drafted, but I couldn't vote for the people who are deciding whether there should be a draft or not, or are deciding whether we should be in Kuwait or not. So I think this is a wonderful thing for those people who give their lives, do the ultimate sacrifice for this country, to be able to come back and gain citizenship. And thank you for promoting it. It's a great thing. And thank you, Mr. Zine, for bringing it to our attention.
Mr. Rosedal.
I had on to salute you from the Vietnam era and appreciate all that you're doing for our country, serving our nation, putting yourself in harm's way. God bless you. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more. I serve the executive board of military recruitment here on behalf of Los Angeles with a group of civilians that help Army recruitment. The man I work with, Lieutenant Colonel Wontana, he is here for a couple of words. And you're in charge of battalion here for recruitment in Los Angeles. You've reached your mission, but this new concept is to give individuals who are here legally an opportunity to become a citizen, at the same time join the military. Lieutenant Colonel.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for opportunity just to speak a few minutes here. The Army's in Los Angeles recruiting, we are doing well. The reason we're doing well because we got local leaders that care, that pass the dissemination, all the information from opportunity and benefits to the young men and women that don't have opportunity to understand what Army's all about. So to make a story short, you know, we got to get the words out, what the Army's all about. It's not all about war. It's about education, it's about benefits and opportunities. So as many of you sitting before me right now, that please get out there and talk to you, you know, your loved one, anyone that you can be able to influence, to think about some of the opportunity the Army's offering, I would greatly appreciate. I can be contacted, look on Global L.A. Recruiting Battalion, and I'll be glad to assist you any way I can. Thank you very much for opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Let's give the United States Army a big hand, everybody, right now for their service to this country. Like to call on Mr. Richard Alarcon from the Seventh District.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are, as you know, the Jobs and Business Development Committee has taken over the responsibility for Film Los Angeles, and the issue of filming in Los Angeles and runaway production is front and center in that committee, and I'm making it a priority. I want to thank President Garcetti for his leadership in this issue and all the members for their work prior to my arrival on the City Council. But we know that runaway production continues to occur. We are, there is increasing competition across the United States and into Canada and other places to take our film shoots away from us, which has a dramatic impact on our revenue generation for our tax purposes, but most importantly, for the job creation in our community, good-paying jobs from an industry that has really been the heart and soul of Los Angeles. For that matter, we are Hollywood, and film production belongs here. So as Chair of the Committee, I will, I have initiated a focus on this as the top priority, one of the top priorities for the Jobs Committee. And we initiated that by embellishing the Ugly Betty Report, which was initiated by our President, to put a focus on what are the issues that affect the filming in Los Angeles in a negative way. So essentially, what you have before you are eighteen recommendations, seven of, actually six of which emerged out of the Ugly Betty Report. There are seven recommendations from the Ugly Betty Report. One of them has already been taken care of, and six of them are incorporated here. What I want to tell you is that we have to be much more effective in our strategic endeavors to protect filming in Los Angeles. We also have to do so in a way that will ameliorate any of the impacts, the negative impacts, on our community. So it's a fine line, it's a balancing act. We also have to take advantage, I think, of the tremendous locations that we have in our diverse city that are not being utilized effectively, and look at the high saturation of use in particular areas. But to give you a sense of what we are, what some of the specific recommendations are, as I said, there are eighteen of them. Many of them are built around the notion of the Business Tax Advisory Committee and the kinds of things we can do to generate special focus on the film industry. But a lot of them are on specific problems. As I've said to the media, the problem of losing film production in Los Angeles is really a problem of the sort of a death by a thousand cuts as opposed to a particular problem. Reducing the business tax is not going to solve the problems of contentiousness when the film production goes into a community and the community starts screaming about the noise and interruption of traffic and all of that. So we have to look at every single opportunity in the total perspective, the holistic perspective of what impacts filming. And so some of these are very specific. So for example, we want to ask DWP to allow filming that is less than seven days to use parking under our guide wires. While they have a specific revenue generation program for the use of that property, it is to the benefit of the city and, in fact, to the ratepayers if we can generate the film and use the parking under those locations. Otherwise, it's just dirt that is not being utilized, and we could make that dirt very bountiful for the city of Los Angeles. The Ugly Betty Report speaks to placing nodes where, instead of moving very large generation equipment around town, we can simply plug into these nodes. One will be connected to City Hall because we have so many film shoots here in City Hall that we can just, they can just plug in and not have to move that heavy equipment around. We're also asking the council to designate a representative in your office that everybody will know is the specialist on filming, and part of that recommendation will be in the form of a letter from the President and myself to each of you, asking you to designate such a person so that the industry knows exactly who the expert in your office is on all of these issues. We want our offices to be much more informed on how to handle problems when they arise. So as I said, there are eighteen recommendations. I hope that you've had the chance to look at them, but I think that this, the most important thing is that we are sending a message today to the film industry that we believe that you belong in Los Angeles, that we want to increase the film production in our communities, but we also accept the responsibility of the balancing act between community harmony and the industry. The final thing that we have to be concerned about is selling the film industry to our community. Our people have to understand that this is good for Los Angeles, that we create tens of thousands of jobs, and I don't know, probably every single person on this council knows somebody very close, probably a family member, who is paid for out of the filming industry in Los Angeles. It affects every family. We need to do a better job of marketing to our communities so that they understand the nexus between the quality of life in their community and the film industry. So we have a lot of work to do. This is the first step. I wanted to move forward as quickly as possible. I want to thank again Eric Garcetti for his leadership in generating the Ugly Betty Report. I think that these recommendations will assist us as we move forward, building an opportunity for us to reduce the flight of film industry, of filming from Los Angeles, increase filming opportunities in our diverse city, and making our film industry healthy as we move forward. So I would urge your questions, first of all, with regard to the eighteen items, but most importantly, your support as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. City Council President Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Now, you got six minutes as opener, so you weren't over, don't worry. Yeah, you have another two minutes of great things to say. When I appointed Councilmember Alarcon to Jobs Committee, the first thing he said, let's sit down and talk about, was Hollywood and entertainment industry. And I really welcome his energy and enthusiasm and his knowledge, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and to work with the community, who has said, you know, the time for talk is over, the time for action is here. Los Angeles and Hollywood are synonymous. For me, I've often told the story of leaving here when I was with Ms. Han, and we were right after 9/11 trying to get tourists back to Los Angeles, and we went to Korea, and we met with Kim De Jong, who recently passed away, the Nobel Peace Prize-winning president of South Korea, and Ms. Han's brother. The mayor gave a beautiful grave Tiffany bowl to him that was, I'm sure, a nice expensive gift, and he looked at that, but then he pointed to me and said, I want that, and I forgot I was wearing a small lapel pin from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce of the Hollywood sign. And here was the President of South Korea, what he really wanted was not a crystal bowl but something that, a small pin that said Hollywood. Because Hollywood is at once an incarnation and an aspiration. It is a place and an idea, and it really is our calling card to the world. And yet, we have rested on our laurels, assuming that people would continue to come here simply because of history, and we are letting the future be written away from us in the meantime. This set of recommendations today continues momentum. This council has proven itself to be a place not just of words but of action, whether it's in our tax policies, whether it's in filming in city locations, whether it's looking at what we can do to creatively train a workforce, or whether it's making sure that we reach out to production companies and individuals. We have said that we are open for business, and more than that, we want to bring business back. Let me tell you one story, because really what we're talking about, Mr. Alarcon and I today, are three Rs. The three Rs of production here in Los Angeles are regulations, relationships, and terrain. And I'll put that in as an R because if you can do with arithmetic, you can do with terrain, right? The regulation is first and foremost what the city can do a lot for. We can make things better and easier for filming here. And I want to thank our CLA, John Wickham, who's put a ton of work in to these ideas, but also for all of us to make sure that when people want to film here that they can, that Los Angeles is known as one of the best places, not just the first place, but the best place to film in this country. And so we have a number of things there. Second, though, is relationships. And all of us around this horseshoe, and everybody who's an elected official, the mayor, our Board of Supervisors, other local officials in this area, need to remember that people make decisions partially on dollars and cents, but partially on whether or not they feel welcomed and whether they feel that people reach out to them. After we did the Ugly Betty motion, I met with the head of daytime programming for ABC because he said, just that this council passed that initial motion created so much conversation inside the entertainment industry that somebody in L.A. cared about them again, that he said, we want to do something, we want to see what we can bring back. Well, as you probably heard a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months later, we are able to announce that we are bringing Back All My Children, which has been filming in New York City for many years, back here, not just to Hollywood but to a neighborhood of Los Angeles called Glassell Park, which Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes and I represent. And in Glassell Park, we will have hundreds of jobs, and the spillover jobs with the caterers and the technicians and the people who are florists and everybody connected to a production, to not only bring that back, but they said a big part of that was just somebody saying that we care. So for movies like The Green Hornet that are filming here right now, thank you for filming in Los Angeles, and we want you to inspire others to do the same. We will never be the very cheapest place. Somebody will always try to undercut it. We can be one of the easiest places and the best place to film. You can be close to your families, and you can hear from us those relationships. But the last piece is the terrain. What can we do to physically change the infrastructure of Los Angeles? Whether that's in filming in a city building, whether it's in building out the plugins to make it less pollution on the streets and less noise on the streets, but easier for folks to get power from our DWP to be able to do productions, or whether it's looking at some of the terrain of our tax structure to make sure that we have further breaks and incentives from the state as well. So I would also just add, with Mr. Alarcon, two friendly amendments. I would ask that the CLA report back on a Filmed in L.A. logo, because one of the other things we should point out and celebrate, when people do film here, we want to have that Filmed in L.A. logo on their materials, to let people know that L.A. cares and is getting behind this. This is something that New York City has done. They have an idea and a brand. We've just assumed we are the brand for so long, we've forgotten to do that. So if we could report back on a Filmed in L.A. logo for films that are filmed or post-production of more than fifty percent modeled on that NYC logo, not the look of it, but the idea of it, and include marketing to promote attendance at those films. That's something that we can do then. Hey, The Green Hornet was filmed here. Let's hear it for our local economy, get out there. And then secondly, ask the CLA to report back on the feasibility of a film tax credit modeled on the New York City tax credit with a cap on annual use as well. Combined with these eighteen things, we are well on the road to making this a place not of runaway or ranaway production, but of production that's coming home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Alarcon for both your work there. Mr. Rosedal of the Eleventh District.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I want to thank both Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Garcetti. When Mr. Garcetti created this committee, it's to put focus where it needs to be. It was sitting in Public Works, which was sort of like an orphan or a stepchild. But when Mr. Smith, who provided the leadership there historically on that committee, put a lot of what you see now as part of the seventeen, eighteen recommendations to fruition. And also, many of you do know that I have been saying since day one when I got elected here, that it's a disgrace that the city where the entertainment capital of the planet is, that we were losing our productions to forty other states and to foreign countries. That was absurd. And we now know the Film L.A. crowd is more energized, but most importantly, some of the folks sitting right there in Row Two on both sides have been very active on the issue for the last bunch of years. So this is a new day in our city, where we're finally saying that we need to keep the industry here in this town and as robust as possible, and we should do whatever we can to make that happen. So it's a new day, it's a new focus. I think Mr. Alarcon's energy is directed in a single shot in a very positive way. I know the industry will stay close to him on it. And of course, Mr. Garcetti, by putting this new committee together historically, has created a place where the buck stops, okay? So congratulations to everybody around the horseshoe for taking these points and moving forward with them. And I know the location managers have their weekend coming up again, and I know some of us will be there at it, too. But thanks again for doing this, and especially Mr. Smith for your historical backdrop on all of this.
Mr. Reyes of the First District.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to add to the chorus of thanks to Councilmember Garcetti and Councilman Alarcon for his energy, and of course, Councilmember Smith in working that committee. But I wanted to, as I reviewed the eighteen points, I want to ask the CLA, I guess they're the ones that put the report together, some questions, and if the folks in Film L.A. could answer, I would appreciate that. But when I work with different cities and states through the League of Cities, I'm actually told how they're taking business away from Los Angeles and California, how the state of Nevada and New Mexico and Arizona, a few, who are able to make a pitch to the industry and say, these are advantages of coming to our state. I know we're not the state of the city of Los Angeles, but are we in a place to posture ourselves, and when do we start seeing that type of marketing? When we speak of our advantages, the fact that we're the birthplace of Hollywood and the film industry, when do we start posturing ourselves so that we can compete with these other locations that are taking away our businesses? Is there anything specific in mind that we can point to?
Well, I think you're...
Please hold my time. Please hold my time.
It began with the Ugly Betty Report and the recommendations to create a website that starts, you know, providing information about how we're filming in Los Angeles. And the recommendations before you today actually address marketing very specifically and finding a way to market what L.A. is doing and what L.A. is offering. When you look at what other cities are offering, the city of Los Angeles is doing a lot of the same kinds of things. We're just not letting people know that we're doing it. And in some of the meetings that we've had with location managers, who have not been filming in Los Angeles for years, they're coming in and they're hearing about the things that we're doing, and they're saying, I didn't know that you did that. I didn't know you would do that for me. And they're learning now that Los Angeles is offering services, offering ways to facilitate their permits and facilitate their productions in ways that they hadn't seen in the past. So with your actions today and actions that you've initiated with the Ugly Betty Report, you are moving in a direction now of having the departments facilitate, working closely with Film L.A. to make sure that this information is available, and resolving the issues that are coming up.
Are we in a point where we need to coordinate with the states, that the state of California can compete with the state of Nevada and Arizona, all the other states that have been very aggressive with taking away business from California? Are we there yet, or is this something we're going to evolve into?
That's what we will need to do, and it may be something you want to add to the state legislative program, to move the state toward greater incentives. The state, in the last budget, adopted an incentive for film productions, staying, remaining in California, but there's a $75 million cap in the cost of those productions. That's not bringing in the big movie productions. So the state of California needs to adjust their tax incentives to make sure that the large movie productions will have a reason to come to California.
So colleagues and Councilman Alarcon and Councilman Garcetti, gentlemen, if we could add directives that includes direction in how we coordinate with the state, that the state could also facilitate the efforts that we're generating through these efforts on 18 points, is that an effort that you would find as a friendly amendment? So we can ask the CLA to look at what type of state language needs to be developed that begins to create the partnership that you're describing, be able to leverage what we already know and have, so that the state is not part of the problem, but adding to the solution. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Paul Coretts of the 5th District.
I have to tell you, I think Councilmember Reyes is on to something, although it won't be as easy as it sounds. I worked on this issue for the six years I was in the Assembly, and frankly, I didn't have a whole lot of luck. Paul Coretts continued that effort, and he finally got a tax credit through. We had a select committee on runaway production. None of that really went anywhere, because the majority of the legislature doesn't get the importance to the economy. And while I was there, the state actually eliminated a great program they had called the Film California First Program. To save $7 million during the first budget crisis, they eliminated a program that resulted in a loss of $500 million worth of filming the following year immediately to save $7 million. The revenue from that was probably between $50 and $100 million, but people just didn't get it. I'm very encouraged by the fact that I think this council does get it. And so we're taking these steps and not waiting for California. I think it's important that we do it as part of our legislative program, but I think some of us will probably have to be involved ourselves, and if we actually try to advance the ball at the state level, I think some of us will have to go up there and lobby. And I don't think just our lobbyists themselves will make a lot of headway. I'm not sure that people realize how important this is to our economy, and I think it's good that folks like Councilmember Alarcon and our President Eric Garcetti and others are starting to put this out there. And it's not just the direct impacts. Our hotels are impacted, our restaurants, our dry cleaners, there's a thousand different ways that the film industry has tentacles throughout our entire economy. And personally, I think part of why our unemployment and some of our other economic problems are what they are, is not just the national economy. I think some of it is the result of the runaway production that has been gradually happening, and we've struggled to deal with. It looks like it's not as bad as it is, because we see a lot of filming on television, we see a lot of reality shows that are still filmed in Los Angeles, but we've exchanged good jobs for really mediocre jobs in that case, and it's sort of papered over the problem. I think it's really critical that we're taking these steps. I think we need to look at what else we can do in addition. There are really three elements. We have to send a message to Hollywood, and Hollywood being the broad industry internationally, that we've actually noticed that we haven't been that film-friendly, and we are changing that. We are once again going to be the most film-friendly city in the country. And if we do all these things, I think that'll happen. We have to reduce costs. We'll never be the cheapest, but we have to move in the right direction. I had a conversation with a film producer who wound up filming an entire production in Australia, didn't really want to, disrupted his families and their lives, they had to fly back and forth. But he said he couldn't justify, even though it was his own film and an independent production, a loss of $12 million not to film in Australia. But if it only had cost four or five million dollars, they would have done it. Well, we have to find a way to meet them halfway, or meet them a quarter of the way, but not providing the incentives just isn't good enough. The state incentives give us a good step in the right direction. It sends the right message, but we've got to reduce costs, we've got to send the message, and we have to make it easier to film. And I think particularly the ease element is a lot of what is focused on in these 18 suggestions. I think if we implement all this, there's some other good ideas floating out there. I'll probably introduce a couple in the next few weeks as well. We can turn this around in time, not to lose the industry. But they are taking a lot of toe-holds in a lot of places. There are now film studios being built in Michigan to take the auto facilities that are lying vacant and replace them with state-of-the-art film facilities. If we just fool around for a few more years, we could find that we've lost this industry. I think we're right on the edge now. So we've got to act, we've got to act fast, and we've got to really be focused, and I'm very excited that we're taking this step.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. To close, Mr. Alarcon.
Members, first of all, let me thank you. Just this brief discussion that we've had exhibits the kinds of opportunities that we have. When we put our minds together and focus on a problem, every one of us has ideas. So first, let me say that we will incorporate the two recommendations from President Garcetti into existing recommendations. One, the logo, there is a recommendation relative to developing a marketing program for our community, and I think the logo would be a good place to do that. And then secondly, on the issue of tax relief, we can incorporate the other idea into the tax relief recommendation. I forget which number it is. With regard to Mr. Reyes's comments about the state and the impact the state could have, I think there is a commonality of strategic purpose that has to be made. And so what I will take on as a challenge, if you want to make an amendment to this and add a 19th recommendation, that the Jobs Committee develop a strategic plan for legislative relief and work with the L.A. delegation in particular to negotiate with them for a legislative program for next year. I'd be happy to work with you on that.
That's probably the best way to phrase it. That gets to the point I was trying to make, and bringing the states, that would be a very strategic way to make that effort real. And I just want to add, as Councilman Coretts has stated, if it takes us visiting different legislators at the state level, or going before hearings to committees, I'd be more than happy to do that. A great number of the folks who benefit from this production are folks in the inner city where you have, and the older parts of San Fernando, where you have historic structures, historic corridors. Our neighborhoods become essentially stages for whole productions and movies, and that's a real economic benefit. So I'll be more than happy and look forward to working with you on that.
Yes, and I want to, I think we need to focus on the L.A. delegation, and so after you mentioned that, my staff and I were talking about perhaps convening the delegation from Los Angeles and having a strategic session with them. Mr. Garcetti and I are already talking about going, for example, to the top 10 worst locations to shoot in Los Angeles from the location manager's perspective, and literally negotiating with the managers of those properties. Let me give you one example. One of the most, the greatest contradictions in Los Angeles is the fact that to put the Hollywood sign in a film shoot, you have to pay $10,000. The manager of the Hollywood sign is the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. They came to testify before my committee, talking about how we have to improve filming in Los Angeles, and yet, they're charging $10,000 for their Hollywood sign. In all honesty, I'm not sure they knew they were charging $10,000, because they contracted out, but you can bet that we're going to sit down with the Hollywood Chamber and ask them to give us some relief so that we can encourage filming in Los Angeles. So there's a lot more we can do. I do want to mention, just as an aside, that our President of Public Works has designated the newest Commissioner to the Public Works Commission, Commissioner Alarcon, to be the film person, and so I'm looking forward to working with the new Commissioner on this task. Again, I want to thank Eric Garcetti for giving me this opportunity, because this is something, as the former Chair of Public Works, when we created the EIDC, you know, it's very much a welcome opportunity for me to work on improving. Oh, would the President of Public Works like to make a comment?
Clerk, hold the time, please.
Yes, good morning. Cynthia Ruiz, President of the Board of Public Works, and I'm joined here by our newest Commissioner. It's been a great addition to the Board of Public Works, Commissioner Alarcon, and she will be our liaison with Film L.A. As you know, Public Works is very supportive of the filming industry and Film L.A., and originally Film L.A. used to be housed in the Board of Public Works. So we work with them very closely, and we're just committed to continuing working, and we really appreciate all the work that the council has done on this issue.
I'd just like to add, it is my pleasure to serve as a liaison to Film L.A. It's always a wonderful opportunity to work directly with Council District 7. I have not yet been briefed on Film L.A., but that meeting has been scheduled for the following week, so I look forward to meeting with the Director of Film L.A. and looking at these 17 recommendations and seeing how we can work together to benefit the city.
And thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Alarcon, and all members. Thank you. Madam Clerk, now we're going to prepare the roll. Open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, so ordered. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item 25, that has cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams.
Greenhouse gas emissions. One of the primary greenhouse gas emitters are trucks, especially those carrying goods. So to reduce the greenhouse emissions from the transportation sector, I'd highly recommend let's go by rail, because rail seems to be a much better and much more efficient means of conveying goods, especially along the west coast of the United States. Right now, you are also considering the high-speed rail. Guess what? The same, right away, the same grade conditions affect the freight as those that reflect, that affect the high-speed rail. Therefore, there seems to be an opportunity that we could take to combine the high-speed rail with freight. So I'd highly recommend that you include an amendment for this particular House bill to include an emphasis upon rail through the western United States.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. No speakers on the queue. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item's item 27, and that was called special for cards.
And Mr. Arnold Sacks.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, another list of special events, but unfortunately, I don't see any listings for the events being held at Staples Centers. I believe the Kings' opening night is this week. Maybe the Lakers are having a preseason game there, maybe the Clippers are having a preseason game. I don't see any events listed for L.A. Live. Doesn't the city waive the fees for those events? Isn't that a major expense to the city to waive the fees at L.A. Live, the convention center, the Staples Center, the Coliseum? It's not, can we get a, I believe Councilman Smith seems to say that it's not. So maybe Councilman Smith could offer up an audit for what it costs the city to have not be reimbursed by the companies that put on special events, or put on events at those facilities? Because it seems to me that, I know the city council worked awfully hard to balance this budget, but I do believe that the city still faces a financial crisis. So why are they not considering charging or being reimbursed for the manpower that is put out by the LADOT and LAPD to patrol these arenas? And that would include also the Hollywood Bowl and, I believe, the Music Center? I'm not sure. I doubt that one. But nevertheless, there's five or six venues throughout the city that get free LAPD and LADOT coverage without reimbursing the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Dr. Williams.
Many diverse interests. Dr. Clyde Williams, Elserino, Northeast L.A. This is a particularly small amount, only annualized to around $750,000, which would be equivalent to the total budget for 15 neighborhood councils, which are much better at providing special events. Also, make note that there are six that don't even have an estimate of how much it's going to cost, and they'll be reimbursed. Is there any auditing of the reimbursements for special events? Then this particular one has a slight twist. CRA is getting involved. There must be a $25,000 limit for some expenditures. Why is CRA contributing to a non-capital improvement of the area? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Madam Clerk, this item has no speakers on the queue, please. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, item number five, the committee report has been distributed. Do we should take that up now?
The item number five. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, we just moved a report from the staff, and that'll be it.
All right, this matter's been circulated. Move the report from staff. Mr. Curtis.
Point of clarification, that's the same as the committee recommendation, right?
Recommendations with amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's clear. No speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 31, called special for cards.
Thirty-one special for cards. Thirty-one special for cards.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, to do the graffiti and re-abatement along the Blue Line segment around 102nd Street Station, what council district would you contact for that? Please send me the word on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate that. On the Blue Line again.
Sir, check with the MTA, and according to their representative, it's not Blue Line property, but it's right by the 103 Station. And--
103rd Street Station.
Some obnoxious graffiti along one of the retaining walls.
Thank you very much. We'll check that out. CLA, note that, please, at that station, at 103rd Blue Line Station. Next item.
Mr. President, you still, Council still needs to take a vote on that if he's the last speaker.
Okay. Madam Clerk, no one on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, next items are the closed session items, 34 and 35 are on the desk.
Thank you very much. In accordance with the government code, we're going to go into executive session now. All those who have business in this matter here could stay. All those who don't, we thank you and wish you a good day. Sergeants, prepare council chambers for closed session. Sergeants, prepare council chambers for closed session.
Thirty-five.
On that settlement in the case of Dalila Aguilar versus the city, and the settlement amount is $175,000.
Okay. Please open the roll on the Aguilar case. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 34, and I believe the city attorney has a statement on that.
Okay. And we do have a card from, Mr. Sacks, I know, had been here earlier. Is Mr. Sacks back? On item 34, do not see him. Our apologies. Mr. City Attorney?
And what is before council is whether to approve the city attorney's recommendation.
Okay. One more call for Mr. Sacks. I know we just had reopened the doors. Is he out there in the hall? I don't see. Okay. We'll make sure that's part of the record. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
City Attorney's recommendation is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Rosendahl?
Just a public comment.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to say that I'm going to go to Washington, D.C. on Friday. Sunday is October 11th, which, for the gay and lesbian community, is the National Coming Out Day. And we're fed up that we don't have our basic civil rights and human rights as people in this great nation. And we're going to march in Washington for our basic civil and human rights. And we hope our president and the Congress listen to us. The African-Americans, the Latinos, the women, have all gotten their basic rights, and we still don't have it. So I'm going to go back there with tens of thousands of people from throughout the nation who are going to finally say we've had enough of being denied our basic civil and human rights. That will be this Sunday, the 11th of October, in Washington, D.C. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. We wish you all the best of luck on that trip. Any other announcements, colleagues? Not? Do we have any adjourning motions today? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions today. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Another sad occasion out on our docks at the Port of Los Angeles. Stephen Brown passed away on September 23rd. He was a longshoreman, working at the Yang Ming Terminal at the Port of Los Angeles when he collapsed from a heart attack. He was only 51 years old. He was born in San Pedro. He was a proud member of the ILW Local 13, and spent the last decade working on the waterfront. He was also captain for Catalina Express for more than 20 years. He was an avid waterman. He loved to sail and surf. He was a former professional skateboarder. Stephen is survived by his sister Cheryl, brother Stanley, Scott, and Stuart, nephew Mark, nieces Katie and Samantha. He had numerous cousins, and of course, all of his brothers and sisters in that great family called the ILW. He apparently had a great fun-loving spirit. He will be remembered by so many, missed by all. And a memorial service will be held this Saturday, October 10th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Cabrillo Beach in San Pedro, near the fire pits. May Stephen Brown rest in peace. But another example of just how strenuous and difficult many of the jobs are out there moving the goods for this country.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Are there any adjourning motions? Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ruth Morales. Many of you know Anthony Morales, who's been here many times, who was one of the chiefs of the Gabriela Indian Tribes. His mother just passed away. She was born in the city of San Gabriel on August 9, 1918, where she lived for 91 years of her life. Ruth was very active in the San Gabriel community with her husband Fred Sparky Morales, chief of the Gabriela Tribe of San Gabriel, who preceded her in death. Both Ruth and Sparky were crusaders for Native American Indian rights. They traveled to development projects across the region to protect Native American archaeological sites. In fact, they played a major role in Playa Vista in dealing with the ancestors there. Ruth belonged to various city senior centers and held many fundraisers for them. She was particularly active at the La Casa de San Gabriel Community Center, and was honored by the city of San Gabriel as Mother of the Year. Ruth passed away on September 30th, 2009, with all of her immediate family by her side. Ruth is survived by three sons, two daughters, along with many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren, five generations. A wake will be held tonight at the San Gabriel Mission, with a funeral mass to take place at the same location tomorrow night. Ruth will be buried at the Mission Cemetery. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mrs. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Norman Wolf, passed away September 28th, the brother of a constituent of mine, Dr. Marlene Bain, widow of former assemblyman Tom Bain in the 40th Assembly District. Norman was born in New York City, May 28th, 1925. Attended University of Virginia, served in the Battle of Normandy, received a Purple Heart, married to Bertha Wolf. When both were 21 years of age, together they raised two children, Robert and Robin. Norman was pillar of the community in Richmond, Virginia. In addition to his very successful business, Southern Distributors, he served in numerous volunteer and advisory capacities. He attributed all his success to his wife, Bertha. Norman was a loving son, adoring brother, and cherished friend of all who had the privileges knowing him. The world is poorer for its having lost him. He was a treasure, a gentle, brilliant, caring man. Honored by the university, his synagogue in his city, as well as Medical College of Virginia, and the Massie Cancer Center. Survived by his wife Bertha, their children, Robert and Robin, Dick Partain, son-in-law, grandchildren Nathan and Seth, grandchildren Alex, Asher, Joe, and Zachary, and his sister, Dr. Marlene Bain. May he rest in peace, Norman Wolf.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zine. Do we have any other adjourning motions? Now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? And we'll next be in session this Friday, that is, the 9th.